Okay. Good evening, everyone. Natasha Rivera, the Chair of the School Committee. I will be joining remotely for this hybrid meeting. So bear with us. Hillary Griffiths and I will be joining remotely. So bear with us as we proceed. Hold on one second. Let me go through my verbiage. I think I just lost that. I think I didn't. I don't think I moved over the verbiage from our last meeting. Hold on. Colleen, do you remember the opening stuff?
It is in last week's meeting.
It is in last week's, right? Okay.
Yes.
What was last week's date?
Three nine.
Oh, my gosh. I've had so many meetings I can't remember anymore. Okay, here we go. Comments. Minutes. Comments. Where? How am I not finding it?
It should be at the top with an asterisk, maybe.
That wants to be read.
I don't have them.
Let me use script, I guess. I'll just.
Yeah, it says copy of meeting script with an asterisk in front of it.
Okay, hold on. Yeah, do that. I think it's gonna have too many folders open and I'm bouncing back. Thank you.
I should be there.
All right, let me refresh. Let me refresh. Ah, beautiful, lovely. Thank you so much. Okay, here we go. As the Chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and participants on the agenda are present and can hear me. School committee members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mary Branley?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Okay, and as mentioned before, Elizabeth Elbota will not be joining us this evening. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade?
Yes.
Brian Haas?
Yes.
Now, we have Wayne White?
Oh, hold on, he's probably muted.
And might as well unmute, I think. Here we go. And Mike? Aria?
Yes.
All right, wonderful. And we also have, I think in the audience, can I? I don't see everyone here, but if you want to just say who's here, from, I think Chuck Karajanis, did I see you move a little bit there?
Yes.
All right, Charles Gubron?
Right here.
Okay, and Brian, is there anyone else there from staff?
Liz York from the high school.
Okay. Hi.
From the soon to be principal of the Fowler School.
You're wonderful. Welcome. Thank you so much. Um, this open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted as a hybrid as allowed by the Act Governor Baker signed into law July 16, 2022. The bill continue to exempt certain provisions under the open meeting law regarding remote meetings and public access until March 31, 2023. The committee is convening via Zoom and in person as posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded accordingly. Be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible and viewable to the public. If you are planning to record this or broadcast this meeting, please use your raise your hand function now to notify the Chair as required by law. And, you know, hand raising. Hey, meeting materials along with the agenda. Most of tonight's meeting materials are available on the Maynard Public School website in the folder titled 2022-2023 Agendas under the tab School Committee. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda and documents unless the Chair notes otherwise. Public comments, public comments agenda item is a devoted time for the school committee to hear from the public. As such, its structure primarily supports a unidirectional recording of public comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Here are the general rules for any form of public comment, period. One, any person wishing to speak and make comments during a virtual meeting may do so by signing up to speak publicly in advance under the public comments agenda. And you have the link, Colleen, you have that link that you provided. It's on the agenda. And I think it was in the, was it in the chat earlier? The Bentley comment?
Uh.
Thanks. Please have your Zoom name match so that we may be able to unmute you to speak. All public comments are limited to three minutes to ensure that everyone who wishes to comment has the opportunity to be heard. No person may comment more than once without permission of the Chair as time allows. The Chair would consider, I'm sorry, could consider allowing a person to comment a second time, especially if it is related to a topic that has not yet been brought up. Email comments in advance up to the public comment agenda item to commentsforsemeeting@maynard.k12.us. You must state in the subject line, public comments, and include your first and last name and town to ensure your comment can be read. Comments read by the Chair will only be read for three minutes. If submitted any longer, they'll be cut off at the three minute mark to ensure all comments are read. I'm sorry, are able to be read in their entirety. It's suggested that you keep them to approximately 350 words. However, submitted comments longer than 350 words will be included in the public record in their entirety. Note, anyone that could submit public comments after the public comment agenda item has passed, provided that they email a copy to commentsforsemeeting@maynard.k12.us up to the end of the meeting specifically stating that their desire to have the additional comments included. Meaning ground rules before we go to the first item on the agenda, I will permit me to cover some ground rules. I will introduce each speaker. After they conclude, I will ask each member if they have any additional comments, questions, or motions they would like to make. I will go through the members' additional comments and questions if time allows. Please hold off speaking until your name is called and remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. If members wish to engage with other members, please do so through the Chair. Make care not to interrupt anyone who is speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted via roll call. Now we will go ahead and call the meeting to order via roll call. Mary Branley?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera? Yes. All right. Public comments?
There are none.
No public comments, right? Nothing's come in the past moment while I was reading my spiel?
No.
All righty. Moving on to student representative report.
Liam is attending a mandatory.
Is he there? It looks like there's somebody who, sorry, just before, there was someone who raised their hand. Um, I don't know if this is for a public comment, but.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Rafi, did you submit on the link? Were you able to complete the link to submit, to sign up for public comment? We'll unmute you.
I don't have anything on.
My assistant, Stephen, is filling out the Google form right now. We just found out about it. He's online right now.
Okay. Yes, please state your name and where you're, where you live.
Yes, my name is Rauf Zaki. I'm a Maynard resident. I live on Summer Street, on 42 Summer Street. And we have a video production company and I've been a filmmaker for 32 years. We thankfully received a grant from the Maynard Cultural Council to teach filmmaking for one day. And we would like to let you, let the school committee know about it because it's gonna happen on April 17, which is Patriots Day, where students will be able to have a hands-on experience working with actors, learn filmmaking, cinematography, and also be directed to the raw footage to edit it for a premiere afterwards. If permitted, we would like to post the signup for the class. Because of the grant, we're able to provide this classroom with all the equipment and the crew and the actors for only a $50 fee for anyone who signs up age 16 or older. We have, we'll be, we'll be teaching the class at Art Space on April 17 from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. If that's okay, I am now finished with my comment and I would love to just post the website where people can sign up. Put it, type it in the chat if that's okay, or say it.
So I think the best thing, the comments, like for, this will be for us. So your comments are to us. And so it sounds like you have a request from the school committee or the school department to help advertise an event. Is that what I'm understanding? That you have for Art Spaces putting on, that you'd like some of our students maybe to participate? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, I would love for the students who are perhaps contemplating filmmaking or, you know, you know, storytelling through camera, would like to sign up for the class, or were looking for something fun to do and creative during the school vacation week to sign up for the class. And I wanted to provide the link to sign up because I'm not sure. You know, I, we are writing a request to the school, to committee to provide the poster and the newsletter. But, you know, I can just say the website right now where they can sign up, or what is the best way to do it?
Best way to, would be to email the leadership, I would say, the high school, probably. It sounds like the population you're looking to get to is the 16-year-olds. So that would be the high school principal York. So if, that would be my first thought because those type of communications would not come through the school committee, this, this medium. This is for our meeting. It's not more for advertising at that point. It's not something that we've really have any affiliation with. But Principal York would be able to gather, maybe get that information. Or Colleen, I think you were, you saying something?
I believe his email is in your email. Yes, I can email him later and he can send the information to me and I'll make sure it gets out to the pertinent people.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. And this class is available for adults as well because we already have five adults signing up. We don't have any students sign up. So it's available for adults if people are interested. Our website is rawvisionproductions.com.
Okay, so if you want to email, yeah, please email your information to Colleen and she will make sure it gets to where it needs to be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and Colleen, is there any other? I don't see any other hands, but I just want to make sure. Nope. Okay, so going back to the student representative report, you mentioned Liam. I'm sorry, I missed what we were saying earlier.
He's attending a mandatory Disney meeting. So he would step out, I don't know, go on to the next and give him some time.
Oh, yeah. So should we just basically table that until later on in the agenda? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we'll see if it can come.
Okay. All right, so I'll, if, without objection then from the school committee, I'll table it to maybe before the school committee. We'll see where, if he shows up. If not, I will read his report during, right before the student, the Chair comments then. Does that sound okay with Hillary? Oh, you're muted. I just, yeah, I see your head. Yes, Mary and Mara, does that sound okay with you all?
That's fine.
Okay, great. All right, moving on. Brian, any urgent business?
No urgent business.
All right, that is fantastic. Are you sure? No? I feel like we've had nothing but urgent business the past few days, so maybe that's why I'm just quite surprised. Okay, happy, happy to not hear it in this moment. Great. Superintendent Report.
Super so it's on your screen. And some of what's in the superintendent's report will cover throughout the meeting. Some of it, I'm just being for example, the district news, we have Athletic Director Aria joining us tonight in a few minutes. He'll go over the survey and the results and the next steps related to the bleachers. Green metal building project has been a very exciting week, if you will. We continuously meet about this project. It's probably the most important project for the school and for the town right now. And as you can see, there were two budget options at our last meeting. Committee chose to support budget option two, which has a total project budget of $83.4 million with an MSBA share of $28.3 million and read that as $28.3 million for you to the mayor and a local share of $55.1 million. And that allows that price point is because it allows for the inclusion of geothermal wells if, in fact, that's the way the town votes when it comes vote. That is the discussion. So that possibility is alive as well.
Brian, can I just, and I know that this came up in the select board meeting the other night when it was being recapped, but just to emphasize here for everyone else who maybe doesn't have the same. So even though we're, it would be voted for that amount and we have to ensure the budget is for that amount, we could still spend less than that if it's decided elsewhere, right? But we still have to go through and authorize, seek authorization for that, assuming that it could be up to that amount, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so at some point, if gas boiler ends up being what is decided, that's still an option and it could still be lower.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was understood, that that final cost amount is not certain. It's just that where that opportunity is available, if that's the direction everyone continues to go in.
Yes.
Thank you.
So school news, we have a German exchange program coming and we'll have one of the high school teachers, Jen Adams, come to an upcoming meeting and do presentation all about that. It's very exciting, but she's the time that I gave her at this point, so she will be coming in the future. And I'm very excited. Fowler School, middle of the screen, middle of the room, we have our incoming principal, Mr. Keith Kenny. He will be joining us officially on July 1st, but he's been gracious enough to come tonight to introduce himself, say hi to school committee and to the public. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Kenny.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the time tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself to everybody in the community. It's really important. Thank you for having me tonight. I had a great opportunity today to join the Fowler School, meet staff and some students and for the building. I had some fantastic tour guides that walked me through the building today and shared a ton of information. It was great. Got to have some snacks and some coffee with staff this morning, which was fantastic. Got to meet with Colleen, go over some of the nuts and bolts of Maynard. And I'm really, really excited to be here. Very excited to be part of a great community. It's very obvious to me to be committed to students and learning and collaboration and working together and the entire process of interviewing and accepting the position and where we are today has been fantastic. And I have all really great feelings. I think there's a lot of, really one of the things to, so I think of the opportunity and I look forward to starting, you know, I, I was sharing with staff today that every year you get that nervous feeling the night before school starts. And you're, you know, thinking about everything that you want to do and saying how you're gonna interact with the people that you meet. And I had that last night, no. And my wife was looking at me like, what are you doing? It's like the first day of school. So it feels really great and I'm you know, work with Mike and David and the entire, you know, Bedford staff to have a smooth transition, get to know the nuts and bolts and do lots of listening and learning as, as my tenure starts. So, okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Spend the day. Yeah, love. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
And I'm saving this child's name. Mr. Kenny, feel free to, whenever you're ready or you can feel free, you are always open anytime to stay, but don't feel up.
Thank you. I'm gonna hang for a while.
No, I, I can't see if you've left the area. I don't, I wanted, I didn't know if any of the school committee members wanted to have any questions maybe for you. And I mean, certainly, probably questions that you, you know, we've been asked of you already, but I'll go to Mary. I don't know if, oh, before you drink that drink.
Maybe we can all, we'll probably all individually find time to just sit.
Yeah, yeah, I've been working on, you know, Meg Lee and putting some stuff on paper for a transition plan. And that's one of the things that I'm really looking forward to is setting aside face-to-face one-on-one meetings to just have, you know, genuine, genuine conversation better. Participate.
Mara? Hillary, any questions or?
No questions. Just welcome to Maynard.
Yes, and same. Welcome to Maynard. I guess the only question I have in the moment is I just, you know, what brought you to Maynard? Maybe I always like to ask that for people because I know we're such a small town that sometimes it's hard to find on the map. And I always am curious on, you know, what brought you into our direction, so.
Yeah, that's a great question. And thank you for asking it. So, you know, I started my teaching career 23 years ago in an elementary school and as I transitioned, you know, through, through my ranks of teaching, I found myself teaching my last five years in the middle school setting. And so the Fowler setup was really intriguing to me in terms of, you know, having a 48 spectrum of students. So I kind of got the best of both worlds, in my opinion. Also, you know, and I've shared this with many people, many years ago when digital was here in Maynard, my dad worked at digital. And I remember going into town with my dad thinking, this town feels really cool. And so when I, when I had the opportunity to, you know, explore what interests, interested me more about Maynard, it was really the talking to people, hearing from people how awesome the community is and how close knit it is. And as I was going through the interview process, it really stood out to me that that was very evident that, you know, people come to Maynard and stay. And, you know, people that live in Maynard stay in Maynard and raise their families and their families raise their families. And so that, those are all really intriguing aspects to it. Another thing too that, you know, I will hopefully share is that when I was looking to be a principal, what was really important to me was the work-life balance. And Maynard is close enough to where I live, where I know I can be committed and be able to be available. You know, sure, notice if need be, but it's not two hours away. It's a very easy commute for me. And that's really, you know, in a nutshell, what it is. I could probably talk about two hours about the many different things.
No, thank you. I think that, you know, right now with so much in education that feels unsettling, I'm just so excited about having leadership and teachers who are still so engaged in the work that, you know, is needing to happen to move us forward. I think having a good work-life balance is critical, especially when we think about our own, you know, mental health and how important, you know, our professional life can sometimes carry over, impact our personal life. So I, I'm glad that you, you know, approaching it, that balance. I think Fowler is an amazing, you know, school because it has that blended elementary, middle school. And I think it's, you know, they're a very solid team. So I'm excited that you'll be joining. You have some big shoes to fill. But I'm glad that, you know, Principal Barth will, you know, help kind of be there and helping with the transition as well. So welcome to Maynard.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. I think that is all for the hot seat for you.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Then we'll.
Okay, and so I think you mentioned, oh wait, are you still going on to your?
I am.
Okay, yep, nevermind.
Reminder that March 30th, we have our own wizard fundraiser. So if you want to see several staff sort of trying to play basketball unsuccessfully and some of our varsity athletes play a little bit, but really it's for fun. So if you didn't get to see it last year, I highly recommend it. It is a lot of fun. And we are the butt of all the jokes. So if you weren't seeing that, that's sign up. You should be, we need to.
So wait, who's in the lineup? I'd like to understand a little bit more who's in this lineup.
I don't have any fun. There's like 20 people that have signed up, teachers, myself, principal, Mr. Willow, maybe this little bit and about, and, you know, a lot of teachers.
It's exciting.
High school girls and boys, varsity athletes, varsity basketball players that are on the team. They can always give up one for the money. The rest of us just run up and down the court. On to that you actually need to approve, if you will. The first one is a grant. It's targeted grant to assist school districts in the planning, development of career and that kind of learning experience that middle school students that will enable them to explore their interests. It's, and this is time sensitive. We had to think if we really wanted to apply for this one because it came out literally two weeks ago and it needs to be used this school year. So by June 30th, 2023, we've targeted grades five, six, seven, and eight. So it's a total of $40,000. It's the middle school career connected learning partnership grant, going to go towards you four and will be allocated to Boss Center 2000, which is structured.
Terrific. I will, if it's okay with you, I'll go around just to the school committees. Any questions? Mara?
I don't think I have any, any questions about this.
Okay. Right, Mary?
I'm so excited by this grant. And so, thank you for doing it. You missed the time and the strength. It's just right up my alley. Thank you.
Hillary?
Um, thank you also for taking this on so quickly. My only question is, are, is this funding covering things that were previously going to be covered by the operating budget and freeing up money? Or is this additional stuff that wasn't possible before?
So this is additional materials, trips, stipends. This is not coming from the operating budget?
Um, Hillary, do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay. Um, I had a question about, because the, the purpose was the planning, development of career connected learning experience for middle school. Can you give me an example of what that might look like for someone who is in fifth or sixth grade?
Yeah, I'm actually gonna ask Dr. Gubron to talk about what's right.
Sure. We're really, really excited about this because for years, as everyone knows, in this town, they have a fabulous high school with so many things going on. And at times, we wanted to make sure that the middle school is aware of what opportunities available to them. For instance, we were just talking about the vision of the graduate that I know the high school is working on. And students may not know anything about that middle school. And we want to, we want to make sure that they have every opportunity to know what's coming up in their for possible careers and academic success. So as part of this grant, we're going to do, we have a group that's working together. It's most, it's very much connected with my cap. It's gonna be the next year we talk about. We have a very exciting group of high school and middle school teachers, counselors, administrators, English learner teachers, special ed teachers. It's been one of the most exciting things that's happened to me since I've been made to sit in the room and listen to the conversations that I know Liz and Chuck have both been part of. It really is because all these, we always thought of that kind of collaboration as something nice to do. This makes us something important and we must. So we've got this, this money there to fund some things. One of the things we want to do is some field trips to different students can see some different kinds of things that will help with career exploration. We're going to have a career day the last week of school, which is going to create some things. Those that know, we have a funding board. We have two speakers coming in to talk to kids about their career. Even though this particular $40,000 is targeted to middle school, we do have the partnership high school. This is our, Tommy, she has some very good ideas. And so we're really looking forward, really forward to it. This happened because of the whole S R funding situation when Hillary asked a question. It wasn't anything to replace our existing funds. When the government has S R funds, sometimes it is not spent. So the federal government gets money to the state at the last minute to, where To various projects, so these are projects that have to be done by June thirtieth or less. So we saw the opportunity and they said forty thousand dollars, why not? So it, it, it's very, very exciting.
I love it.
Kudos to Mike Bar, because I remember there was one point where we were driving someplace together and he was all about doing this. Especially sixth through eighth grade, just again, because sometimes the kids can get to a tunnel on the seventh and eighth that not quite. You know, have, having a challenge to see what, what's going to happen to me then.
Absolutely.
Well, I love it and I'm very excited, you know, anything that. Mister Charles LeBron is excited about, I'm excited about for sure, because lets me know it's in good hands and well. Ready to go, so thank you so much. I think if no one else.
You have a great team working on it.
Oh, I, I know. I, I'm so excited for these grant opportunities that have been, are able to be explored and, I mean, this is. You know, kind of the stuff, it's unfortunate that, you know, it doesn't allow us a lot of time to build, you know. More long-term programmatic things always, but it certainly allows these opportunities, maybe unexpected. But still keeps exciting, you know, things on the horizon for, for our students and also just the excitement that it builds within our, our educators. To be able to, to put this, bring this forward too. So thank you for everyone who's been involved in planning and, and. Getting these funds, so. Without any other delay, I think I'll go ahead, Brian, to. Bring a motion to accept the grant funding for forty thousand dollars. For the purpose of the career development connection, middle school career connecting learning department to fund code four twenty-four. And inhabit allocated to cost center two thousand for instruction. Any, any other discussion or questions? Okay, so roll call vote, Mary Branley?
Yes.
Morrow Hogan? Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera, yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next grant tonight we have is an extension of grant five ninety-eight, the MyCamp. Grant, which we talked about at the last meeting or before, they, they had some additional monies. So for academic planning, that MyCamp, it's an additional sixteen hundred dollars, give each other grants, nine thousand, this brings us to a total.
Oh, fifteen eight, I made a mistake, it's fifteen.
Oh, yeah, yeah, fifteen, but so for this particular.
Fifteen eight hundred is what the grant, the grant total would be, right? Okay.
Sixty, the sixty eight hundred.
We're just approving this sixty eight hundred additional portion.
Yes. It's funded by ninety-eight and it's also being allocated to cost center two thousand, which is instruction.
Great, I know we talked about this at the last meeting, but is there anything else that would be different? Or just, is just an extension of the same function? And just more monies able to support that opportunity?
These are the curriculum materials at the high school level. We were hoping to get this money originally, but our first grant was nine thousand. We thought we were promised that. I put in a, a kind of a plea for it, thinking that we could get it, and we didn't get it first. And then I got, we got an email this week, Liz and I talked, we had a turnaround of three days. To buy the new grant, which we did, and we'll be using this, I know the council of the high school are very excited about that. This is, so we're just going to, we're going to use this additional six thousand eight hundred dollars for curriculum materials. Related to career and.
Terrific. Mary, any, any questions?
This is also have to be spent by June?
Have, no, we have August thirty-first.
So the end foundation, when we funded, Nepris is never here at all. The big, the exploring careers, given four thousand dollars, it was to keep available at the time, and it was exploring. But it's still up and going, I miss.
But Jean is also involved, Jean is also involved and. As a matter of fact, one of the things that we're doing is hoping that some of the, especially base graders, will hear about some projects.
Yeah, that's what we were hoping, we were kind of hoping that it was kind of down to the eighth grade of Fowler, for the.
Hey, sorry, I had to mute myself momentarily.
That's fine.
Okay, Morrow, did you, did you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, Hillary?
No, I'm good.
All right, well, I don't either, so again, many thanks to all of this, all this work that we're doing. Wait, go back, I need to, I need to do the motion.
Sorry.
That's okay. All right, real quick, I will make a motion that we approve and allocate the grant. For MyCap additional funds of sixty eight hundred dollars. To fund code five ninety-eight and all of these funds will be allocated to cost center two thousand for instruction.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, roll call vote, Mary Branley?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera, yes, motion carries. Wonderful.
And we have two more sort of reminders. Which would be the last thing in there is budget, but we've had some changes since Monday, so and it's also later in the agenda, so we'll sort of skip over that. The last page of the report talks about the program of studies, which we have Principal York here for. We also have the bleachers as well. We can do bleachers, Mr. Aria, Amy Aria is on the screen as well and sort of go through that presentation and then.
Yeah, that sounds, is that okay? So I know that. Jen Adams and will be coming at a future meeting, so that was part of that agenda, so we're, we're tabling that to a future agenda item, right? The, the high school exchange program? Correct, okay, so then the next item on the agenda is the bleacher update and survey results, so I will. Turn that over to you, Director Aria. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me. So yeah, I'll just go through kind of what me and the alumni field facilities committee has. Been up to, to this point. So the committee, we were first established in November, December of twenty-two. And then we've met a few times since then. To discuss potential scope of design on a potential bleacher project. We work to identify a timeline for this project. We discussed a request for qualifications, RFQ, for a potential project manager when we get to the design phase. And we also have collaborated on that community survey that was sent out a few weeks back to. Kind of gauge the community and see where their needs and wants fall as far as. The potential new construction on bleachers and. What maybe future wants at the alumni field complex would be. Excuse me. So. Before, in the meeting where we discussed the community survey, we also were discussing. How to best serve the community as far as the spectators at alumni, until we could work towards. New construction there, and so we all agreed that demolishing the visitor's side bleachers. Would give us the capability to place rental bleachers. In the center of the field, which would just be a better. Overall experience for the spectators, as well as just everyone who visits Alumni Field. So last week, we were able to have the visitor's side bleachers demoed and. I believe the town since then has kind of leveled out the area there. And so now we have a nice flat surface on the visitor's side, which is the one seventeen side, for when we have rental bleachers. Got something stuck in there, sorry, for a second.
That's all right, take your time.
Yeah, so. Looking at the community survey, the community's needs pretty much lined up with the scope of work that we. We discussed and what we expected. So based on the survey. We, we, we saw that the community believes that we need. New construction on the home side for bleachers with a capacity around eight hundred to a thousand seats. And to us, this makes sense, kind of what we discussed. The current capacity of the home side bleachers is nine hundred and eighty seats. So kind of taking back the capacity didn't make a lot of sense and that's pretty much what the community said. And another need along with the bleachers is a press box. So we kind of gauged the community's interest on that too. And it was overwhelmingly. Essential to the community that we would need a press box. The reasons behind that.
Ask a question, sorry, real quick, just to make sure I'm following along with the, the one to five scale there. What does, is it most important to least important? I just want to make sure the frame of reference. Associated with each of those numbers is.
Yeah, so five would be, yeah, so five would be essential and one would be not needed at all. And there was quite a bit of people that said not needed. Looking through the comments, it did seem as though. The not needed. Weren't really sure behind the reasons as to why the press box is essential to, you know, being able to properly host events at Alumni Field. As you know, the press box, that's where we store the AV equipment, that's where we store the scoreboard controller. And not having that, even just to store that equipment would mean our capabilities to. Film games, to broadcast games, to have a public address announcer, to allow football coaches. You know, the proper view during the games and to allow all coaches of all sports to film games and like decipher. Game footage and kind of work with their, their programs to, you know, improve the team. So it's kind of a no-brainer with, with new bleachers to include a press box there. So those are the essential items as far as new construction goes. Then we looked at some of the other answers and for the alternates, we did ask about restrooms and concessions. And what people thought as far as. Are restrooms needed, like a restroom's building? Is a new concession stand needed? Are both needed or do we not need either of them? Restrooms definitely led there and restrooms and concessions was there as well. So as we discussed these, these numbers and looked at the responses. It makes sense to us and we felt it was appropriate that when we do get to the design phase. To kind of work through designs for a combined restrooms and concessions building. The plumbing's already there with the concession stand and if we're going to, you know, put in restrooms, it's going to be in that area. So an upgrade to the whole building kind of makes sense and would be more efficient because that concession stand. Is in not the greatest shape right now, so we, we felt it was appropriate. To ask for designs for one dual-use building once we get to that phase. So as far as the timeline. I know I shared the projected timeline that we all had, so.
Just ask the question, just real quick, about the, the additional priorities that you had in the other survey questions? Just want to make sure I understand what, again, the same thing, the interpreting, the, the ranking, the one, one through four. And how it correlates with each of the outcomes there. Can you clarify that for me and for?
Okay, oh, so the, um, the additional upgrades you're asking about after, okay. Yeah, so we had four additional upgrades that we also asked about. Just to preface, these are more potential future upgrades and these. Potential upgrades, depending on where the community felt was most needed. We felt these would help guide us as we work through, you know, designing new bleachers, potential new restrooms and concessions. Looking to the future because we don't want to kind of, you know, box ourselves in with new designs and not be able to. Have the potential to add maybe an artificial turf field, which was number one. New track, new field lights, new tennis court were the other items that we asked about, but we, we included these. Because as we work through the design phase, like I said, we really want to make sure that with new construction, we don't, we, we make sure that we have the capability of. Potential upgrades years down the line as well. Their artificial turf was definitely number one. With the state of the grass at Alumni Field, I kind of understand where the community is coming from. So as we work through the designs with a design firm, we want to keep in mind that. Potentially, we may be looking at artificial turf in the future. So with these new bleacher construction, let's make sure that with these being built. Where we have the ability to still put in a turf field if we're able to move in that direction in the future. So that's where those came from.
Great, thank you. So basically for just to take away, because I know there was some questions about the survey. So it's not necessarily that would be going into effect in this immediate go-around, it's just factors we would want in the future. For the design to price out options and what that might look like in considering. Once we're looking at bleachers, factors in, what would that look like, how much that would cost potentially in the future, but nothing that commits us to money now.
No, no, it wouldn't commit us to money now. We just want to make sure that we have the, the ability to do so in the future if we want to. And the ability to, you know, get designs on it and look, look at what numbers would be like on that in the future. We don't want to construct a new set of bleachers where we don't have the space to potentially. Open up this, open up where the field is right now and put in like slightly larger turf field and. Make sure we do it right in the future, so that's where that came from. These items won't be included in whatever designs that we, we get for the bleachers, not restrooms, but yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so looking at the timeline, our first item. On the timeline is CPC funding for the bleacher design phase. And on February fifteenth, the CPC public hearing, CPC. Approved the grant funding for our design phase and their approval was. Seventy-five percent of all the design phase invoices, up to two hundred thousand dollars for two years, but. As you see on the timeline, it should not take that long to work through this part. And the reason behind their seventy-five percent and not a hundred percent of all invoices. Was they want to make sure that they're not funding designs for any items that they would not be eligible to fund construction or. You know, rehab on. Those items would be press box concessions and restrooms because per. Per the CPC rules, they, they would fund like building enclosed buildings. But they could help with the bleachers, so that's where the seventy-five percent came from.
Can I just add something there? Because I know this came up in the select board meeting, they were looking at the warrants and just for the school committee's. Awareness, the way it's worded on the CPC. It's control article A C is what they're presenting for the CPC funding and they have it worded as. The Alumni Field Bleacher Design Project. The Alumni Field Bleacher Design Project will fund the design scope, engineering, and the plans to be used to initiate the procurement process. Required to begin construction on new bleachers at Alumni Field. The seventy-five percent cost allowance allows CPA funds to be expended only at the CPA eligible aspects of the design. The design will focus on creating safe and accessible seating with sufficient capacity for spectators. Of a variety of athletic community events and I, the way it was framed is that it would be targeted for soft costs. Right, as opposed to hard costs, which are the actual construction. This is soft costs or the planings.
Yes, so the soft cost would be our design phase. So that will actually, as I go through the timeline here, just to clarify everything, uh, that'll make a little more sense if it's not one hundred percent clear. Um, so after their approval of the funding. These funds are to be appropriated at town meeting in May. So at this point, um, we are waiting for those funds to be appropriated at town ma- uh, at town meeting in May. And once we know those funds are in hand, our next step would be to um, submit a request for qualifications. To hire a project manager, uh, because with a construction project of this, this size. A project manager is needed, um, if not required by law. So hopefully by uh, June of twenty-three, we're hoping to have a project manager on board. Where we could work through finalizing the scope of the designs. Um, of the bleachers and potential restrooms and concession stand. So we can then go out and procure a design firm, which is where the CPC funds come into play at that point. The procurement of a design firm to, you know, do a study, survey. And um, get cost estimates, more accurate cost estimates on what um, the construction may look like. So, once we work through the design phase. The next step would be funding for the construction. And our plan right now is in working collaborat- collaboratively with the town is to um. Make a request for additional borrowing in October of twenty-three at the town meeting. And once, once we pass that step, we can build the, the construction project out to bid. With the design specs that we have in hand from the design that we've procured. In the rest of the committee, uh, like field facilities. Contingency's plans as well in case um, we cannot hold true to the timeline. Uh, and, and we decided uh, that it would be best to. They'll look at what long-term bleacher rentals made, although we have a nice spot to the bleachers over by one seven. Um, so we're awaiting some numbers on what uh, a one.
Mike, hold on, Mike, I just want to, I think you're breaking up a little bit. Is it just me or? Can you, yeah, same. Are you, Hillary, are you able or can everyone hear Mike? Mike, I think you might be breaking up a little bit. Um, I think I heard what you were saying. I don't know if it's maybe just. We have to go back a sentence or two. So you were um, talking about the.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so we, me and the committee um. Put in place, uh, we discussed some contingency plans. In, in case that we can't hold true to this timeline that we had laid out. Um, so right now we're awaiting um. Proposals on what a long-term rental maybe. I'm looking at a one-year rental with uh, options to extend. For, you know, multiple years in, in case we can't hold true to this timeline. We're not able to break ground in the summer of twenty twenty-four as we plan with this timeline. So if all goes well. Like I said, we plan on construction happening after the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four year. Um, so there wouldn't be any school sports or, you know, big sporting events at Alumni that would be affected. But yeah, that's, that's the update up now. Are there any, any questions on what I go through? Now, this is the first update we've given on the bleacher project. Any questions at all?
I think we'll, I'll go through the board, but I just want to first say thank you so much. I, I, I heard some kudos for your participation in attending the C, the CPC and just leading this project. And I know it's one that is very um, can be very triggering for some people in the community. And understandably, you know, it comes to safety and um, you know, events for kids. So I do appreciate all the work that you've been putting into this and just want to make sure you, you hear that. I will go ahead and go around the, the committee to ask some questions before I, I have some other ones. Uh, Mary, do you have any questions?
Who goes the same thing? I know I've been in um, different meetings with you and you've just done a great job really spearheading this. You and the committee, but um, thanks for that. Um, so a couple of questions. So when we actually have the bleachers, are we going to have the ones on the visitor's side replaced? Or are we just, we're just concentrating on the home, right? We're just going to end up with that one set?
Yeah, we're just concentrating on the home side. Again, that's another thing that we discussed as far as potential future upgrades there, like artificial turf. With new construction that you see examples of, there are a lot of, a lot of schools now going with just a larger set of bleachers on one side. So that was one of the factors, but we also um, agreed that it would give us, you know. More capability to be able to do future upgrades. Um, so just having that extra space um, allows for that.
You know, that, that's what I was hoping for, so to that. And then um, I know how you heard me, you spoke about the potential of the turf field seems to be something.
Mary, you're fading. I think you need a closer mic.
Um, so the turf, the potential of the turf, so the way the bleachers are going to be set. And maybe you answered this because if we don't have the visitor spaces, um, there'll be enough. It's going to be laid out so that down the road we want to deter. It's, it's not going to be, we can't do it because, well, you know, we messed up with where the bleachers are set, right?
Correct, that's, that's our thought process there. Being able to, you know, widen the field if we wanted to. Is kind of what we're looking at and just having that extra space allows us to do, you know, multiple things in the future. Potential field lights, obviously you need big posts for that, so that gives us space to properly position them. And of course turf, um, if we wanted to, the artificial turf years down the line. It allows us to put in a proper, you know, large size, multi-use, artificial turf field.
And then, um, let's see, um, so I remember that bathrooms weren't eligible for CPC. I think when we first went to one of the first meetings, so was it because we're talking about bathrooms with the concession? That it wouldn't necessarily work yet, right?
So bathrooms, concessions, and the press box are all actually not CPC eligible. Um, as far as their funding goes. These items would be of the construction project. The seventy-five percent um, up of the invoices up to two hundred thousand dollars. Is, this is part of the reason why it's seventy-five percent, because they want to make sure they're only funding the designs for the CPC eligible items. So even though we would be getting designs for these, it wouldn't necessarily be funded through those CPC funds. I guess something that I forgot to mention is we do have the two thousand dollars from the CPC. Where they'll pay seventy-five percent of the invoices, but the town also going to. They're anticipating getting around fifty thousand dollars in free, free cash that will also assist with these. Getting these designs done.
That was going to be my last one, because I remembered that it was free cash, we were going to get fifty thousand, so, so we'll end up two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, and, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mauro?
That was one of my questions. Do you ever been answered that for me? Um, and. So the, so the plan, it then go to the CPC to fund for the construction phase. I'm assuming that that's still only going to be a percentage of what we're ultimately going to try and do. But if we need the press box and then there are restrooms and concessions. I guess we're going to have to figure out where that money is coming from, correct?
Yes, that would be part of the ask. Um, the request for funds at the October town meeting.
No more questions, you said, Mauro?
I don't have any more questions.
Okay, um, Hillary?
Okay, I have several. Um, so when, with, are the. Plans for the new bleachers on the home side to be big enough to encompass the number of seats that were on the visitor's side? Plus the home side originally? Or are we cutting down the total number of spectators that will be able to be held on bleachers?
Well, um, it's going to be very close to the same amount. So right now for the twenty nineteen certification that the building commissioner. Um, mentioned in his report when he did not certify these currently just for use. He mentioned that current capacity of the home side is nine hundred and eighty seats. Which since twenty nineteen certainly may have changed, um, because he had two different numbers in there. Um, where the seated capacity um, went down a bit based on news, uh, new specs to those certifications. So it went from something like eighteen inches per seat to twenty-two inches per seat. Um, so somewhere in the, you know, nine hundred to a thousand injury now on that side. And by building, you know, a bleacher on the home side for about a thousand seats, that would vessel with plenty capacity. Our biggest events there probably, you know, graduation and then our big home football games. And very rarely is that home site one hundred percent full. Um, so a capacity of a thousand bleachers should be plenty, um, you know, for our large events there.
Thanks, um. Is the hope or the expectation that CPC will fund the. Total construction of the bleachers apart from the restrooms, the concession stand and the press box?
So. We have those two options, right? The CPC funding to fund the eligible items of the construction project. And then the request for funding at town meeting in October. Um, so we're hoping between those two items that the total construction project would be covered. Um, and that's our plan in place right now.
So I think part of my concern is um, looking at the results of the survey. Um, my interpretation of the results isn't quite as positive as yours was. In terms of thinking that, I think that the community definitely thinks that we need new bleachers, um, from a safety perspective and such. I don't know that looking at it, it's as clear that the community really supports the press box, the restrooms and. The concession stand. And so I'm wondering if. There's a way to, and it's not so much that I don't think that they would necessarily support it. I think that there's some, there was some hesitancy in those results. And. That town meeting, we're also going to be asking for money for Green Meadow. You know, there may be a vote for something related to a senior center, like there may be a whole lot of things that. People, that will get people thinking about where they want to spend their money. And so I was just wondering if there would be a possibility to have, um, you know, the bleachers separated from those other pieces. For the vote, so that's not an all or nothing thing. Like I wouldn't want lack of support for a new concession stand to tank new bleachers.
And no, that's something that I would have to, you know, discuss with the committee and the townspeople to get more clarity on. I don't really have a, a confirmed answer for you at this point of that. But we're obviously, you know, looking at all options to fund this project. I've only been in Maine for a couple of years and I know I'm a little biased, but those bleachers definitely aren't the safest. The best, and we really do want to treat our, you know, student athletes in our community. And serve them the best we can, so our hope is. The community sees that this is needed and um, no matter how it's put to vote that we can get it passed. But yeah, that's definitely something that we will discuss internally, you know, before October.
I think that people definitely see the need for a safe bleacher, so I think that part is pretty clear. I think the reactions I hear from the community are more about the restrooms and the concession stands. Um, piece and what, how that weighs against some other town needs.
Yeah, so those are. Yeah, as we, when we get designed, so those aren't going to be um. We're going to get designs for bleachers and press box, number one. The restrooms concessions are going to be kind of alternates to that, so we can separate them. And when we go ask for um, the money. Those can be separated if, if we feel as though. Um, we have, you know, a better shot of being able to get what is one hundred percent needed there. Um, so we, we're going to.
Yeah, just want to get a point of, point of clarity just for a moment and Hillary, this might help a little bit. Um, I know for, just as a point of reference for the roofs, for instance, when we were looking at the Green Meadow roof. We had designs came back with different parts. Like if you did this part, it would be this much. If you did this, you know, this or this would be this. And then I imagined that would be what we're, we're, we're saying, right? They're not committing, but it would just give context of like the cost associated with that would be. And then we as a board or whoever, the building, whatever voting bodies would then weigh that. And then, you know, give our recommendation based on that, that that, it doesn't just go from the designs to the town. I think it would be, you know, to us to be like, okay, exactly, what are the, what are that cost? Um, I think we know that like the, there is a snack shack there. You know, there is repairs it needs anyway, so like that probably needs to be outlined, you know. What that would need, what it needs to be done anyway. So I'm, I'm just thinking that as well because I do have questions about like the turf. I, I just don't want to invoke that my opinion right now because I don't. You know, I don't think it's a decision point that's being made at this moment, but I do hear what you're saying and I just want to make sure. My understanding of the process that, to come down the road is that. It's just going to be scenarioed and it would still be a conversation piece that we would have.
Yeah, I'm not saying I.
Correct.
I mean, I actually want the concession stand on the restrooms, but I just want to make sure we leave flexibility. So we're not in a stage where we're going to town meeting saying, you know, our design plan is for this, we can't make changes. Or, you know, it's too late, like it'll, if we make a change, it will delay the new bleachers two years and we don't want to do that. So you have to vote for a concession stand that you don't want, like, I want to make sure there's flexibility when we go to town meeting or before town meeting.
Yeah, and, and what Natasha said, she's spot on with that. It would be spread items. So, you know, restrooms concession would be separate um, costs, so we can see it split from the bleachers press box.
So did you have any more questions?
No.
Um, I have a few. My, one of them is about just the survey in general. It looks like there are some. Open comments that maybe were part of. That weren't entirely captured in um, that last question. It just says one through six, but I'm not, um. I wonder if that could be shared with us at some point, if um, you're able to, just because I know some of them do kind of speak to that point, like. You know, not in favor of this, you know, those points, and I just want to make sure that we, we get. Full insight into what that feedback was as well.
For sure. I can share those with you and there were, there was also um, additional comments after these uh, other items on.
Anything private, you know, if they're just general, I don't, you know, um, or anything. I just want to make sure that we, we can see what those, those comments are specifically that people populated in um, in the open, in the open text. As well. Thank you. Um, the other questions that I had were. Thank you. Um, the other questions that I had were um, what happens if in the event, because there is conversation around town about, you know, Hillary mentioned you know, we have this Green Meadow school that's going to be coming up to vote. And what if we at some point decide maybe October is not the best time to put the bleachers up to vote? Maybe the town wants to do, maybe want to do an override for FY twenty-five? And maybe there's a whole bunch of things that will be included in that for next spring. I was looking at your scenarios um, for, for that. And I just want to make sure if that were to happen or if that were to be decided in the lead up for your timeline, um, the rental, would that mean we would just, it would just push everything back about like eight months? Because it would be from like October to, to May?
Um.
I'm just wondering if, you know, if you can't answer that now, I would like to hear what that scenario might look like in uh or factored in because there is conversation about um an override potentially. Um, and I just want to make sure that we are considerate of, of that and what the impact with this would be if we needed to rent for another season. Is it better to, at this point, maybe thinking about buying? I don't know if that was at one point, one of those conversation option, like is it more fiscally prudent to buy things that you can move later, that maybe could go to Crow? I have no idea. I just wanted to just think about like if there's, this has to get moved to a different town meeting, what would that look like in impact?
Yes, so we did discuss the potential very early on of buying um a similar set of bleachers that you saw we had rented in the fall.
Right.
Um, and looking at the, looking at the cost of that um compared to the rent we can, you know, get them for the time periods that they're needed, um, is, it is definitely more costly on our end. Go with those. We're tracking into the more longer term rentals to get clarity on, you know, what a longer term rental, kind of like a lease scenario would be in case we needed to um extend it for um another year. And in thinking of this potentially getting pushed back later town meeting, it would be tough to start construction at any point during the school year. Um, in our opinion, uh, just with all the events going on there. So construction will have to start and in this, at some point in summer, whether it be twenty-four or twenty-five. So if it did get pushed back, it would be more year to year rather than, you know, season to season.
So if a guy, let's just say if the timeline sticks and there's a vote in, in October, you're still not doing construction until the summer anyway of, of next year, twenty-four, right?
Correct.
Um, and so there might not be any change because if the vote comes in, well, it would be, uh, if the vote coming, because you'd be different, um. They'll get this, they'll bid out the contract. So if you don't have the funding yet, you can't wear it delays is the bidding of the contract and the construction. But if there's a town meeting to, to secure funding um, in the spring of next year, that would be let's see, funding application for construction phase, that would be seven and eight, that would be step seven and eight, that would be delayed, right? Is that, am I, am I, okay, so, right, you're not going to have funding, so you have no contract, you have no contract. But you could do that maybe relatively quickly possibly? It still is not off the table that it could get done in the summer, just not, not necessarily great.
I think the chances will be very low just because, um, you know, if we were to put it out to bid after a May town meeting in twenty-four and we were able to, you know, there's, there's time that we have to wait as long and keep the project out to bid to gather those bids and, you know, look at them each individually. Um, and then even if we were to hire, you know, a contract, a construction firm, like as soon as we could after we put out to bid, if this got pushed back to May of twenty-four, the funding at town meeting. Um, it's with a project like this, it may take a company, you know, a long while to secure the materials they needed to build the bleachers. So I would anticipate that it would be very difficult to be awarded funding at town meeting in May, get the project out of bid and still be able to break ground by July.
Okay, I would say just, um, you know, maybe bring it back to the committee and do a scenario play if that were to happen. If the, if there is a decision not to put it up for vote in, in, in the spring or the fall, um, what would that look like, you know? And not that that's going to be the preferred option, but I think it's just helpful for us to understand the impact. And if there's other cost factors of rentals and stuff that need, would need to, you know, be considered additionally. Because you said it has to be done over the summer. So that's a very good point, too. Um, to horn in. Okay, and um, and just generally, I, I'll say this because I, I don't want to go too in deep, but the, the turf piece. Um, you know, I just want to make sure there's more conversation about that a little bit more before, before it even comes to really seriously being entertained. Um, I hear, you know, if, I don't, I don't know if I I don't know much about it except for, you know, it's a lot of it in, you know, there's a lot of health concerns now. And now you hear about some districts are pulling up turf and whatever. So I just want to make sure that whatever the opportunity to um explore doesn't hinge on that possibility with certainty happening. Um, just in the back of our minds, that that may not be the approach that is preferred in some point. So anyway, just.
No, I have, I have heard that as well.
Um, I know it's a hot button right now that's been in the news and, you know, um, and and I just want to make sure that there's just more, it allows for more conversation, um, should it need to be happened.
Oh yeah, that would, it would definitely.
Right. I don't have any other questions. I, um, I just wanted to thank you again for, for all of this work that you're doing and um, I know that the capital planning, capital projects, I'm going to, there's many different CPC, CP, capital capscom um, would, wanted to get some of your survey results as well. Brian, do you know if uh, because I think they were talking, they wanted to hear more information, I guess for maybe their own planning purposes. So like for instance, if the snack shack, you know, those things are important for folks and we like the designs come back and they have estimates. I want to make sure that they're also looped in because if that's not something that can be done now, that the capital pl- um, planning committee has that data so that they can maybe map out and project how that or when that might be possible. I know Mary, you heard, uh, John, they said that in our, one of our town budget, didn't he?
I don't remember, but yeah.
Yeah, I thought you mentioned about just getting the results from the survey, just so they could, you know, whatever those things are that they could maybe also add them to their list in some way, so.
I'd like to actually, I'd like to make one more note kind of off of what you just said, Natasha. Um, kind of pushing these things down the line um may mean more cost. I'm no construction expert at this time, but in speaking with some of the people working on this, um, I guess construction costs have gone up like fifty percent, sixty percent over the last just five years, so.
Yes, we have.
Time is of the essence for sure.
I, I think that is definitely part of the conversation that Maynard is generally struggling with is is we've, and we, this happened even with the fire station, just for a little Maynard fact, you know, at one point it only was eight million dollars to do. And then we waited a couple of years and then it turned out to be, I don't know, eighteen million. So I think that's, you know, that's what Maynard needs to understand and accept. And if it's the will of Maynard to do that, then that is, so be it. But I, your point is well taken that many people do not advise that that is the best approach because you still, you pay more later. Um, and so that is where I think the conversation about overrides comes in. There's uh, our, our expenses as a town um do exceed our allocations or our revenues bringing in. And so it's a larger conversation residents need to have and voters. But I appreciate you highlighting that because it is something that always be mindful of.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Mike.
Well, thank you for having me. I can send you the, the couple of items that you asked for.
Yeah, and also Brian, um, the select board, I'm just want to make sure that how are they, is this something or is Mike planning to present to them or what do you suggest? Because I know that there was appetite for them to be kept updated. What is Greg, do you know what Greg is suggesting or has he suggested anything? Or is he just going to be updating his, himself?
The same information that Mike presented to us tonight, he shared either has or will share with uh Greg, the one pager with all the information and the survey results.
Okay, terrific.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put together a nice concise memo for Greg to share with them, so.
That would be wonderful. Thank you so much. And I'm sure FinCom will also um want to see that. So just whatever you have, if you could just make sure I stay looped in on that because I can also circulate that to the FinCom to keep them updated. Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. Um, and now returning back to uh, the agenda, hold on, um. Let's see. Budget planning or is, is we don't have?
Madam Chair, we could do the program of studies.
Yes, sorry. I'm sorry. I totally skipped over that. Uh, so sorry, Principal York.
I can introduce Principal York. She has shared the program of studies with a guide to the changes that she'll explain.
And here I am.
There she is, just like that.
Thank you for joining us.
Very, very pleased to be here. So each year, the high school takes on the program of studies project beginning in October in order to have courses ready and scheduled hopefully before April vacation. Definitely after April vacation, so the teachers know what they will be teaching, students and parents know what the students will be taking and everything is resolved with plenty of time for adjustment before we go home for summer. And it's an ambitious goal. Some years we may get a space, some years we do not. But this year, we're well on track. One of the very first problems that my team had to solve was um reinjecting physical education back into the upper class curriculum. It had fallen away. And the state does ask that we may keep available for one cyclic year to all upper class men. We are also allowed to have them uh earn a waiver or ask for, we granted a waiver. And so we decided as a leadership team that any upper class student who would rather take two of the new electives or a full year course could seek a waiver to the P requirement. And we'll be very liberal and generous with that waiver. So not only if they participate in school sports, but also if they do an out of school sport, if they participate dance or yoga, martial arts, or something we haven't thought of and they bring it to our attention. And we've got some, but we've also had a healthy response from upperclassmen that they would like to have. It's a nice break. It's a um, a chance to sort of have adult recess and play fun games and be physical. The high school day can act of long. And so I think we'll have a nice balance between waivers and P classes for our upper class. Now, because almost every elective at Maynard High School had become full year, we had to program some half year electives to go up against physical education. So that called for innovation and creativity, also flexibility on the part of the faculty. And they did a great job. So we're going to be offering the following half year electives that I listed out for you. And I did put an asterisk after the ones that are new such as international film and culture, robotics, um, podcasting, mythology, uh, US history since nine eleven. The students always ask the history teachers, why don't we ever get to now? So this will be a course about how we get to now. Um, micro and macroeconomics, which students very much want to take who are interested in business. Um, Mr. Flynn has totally revamped his curriculum. And now after students to art one, which is a full year introduction to art, they can choose for art two, they can choose between ceramics, world cultures, art history, art and design and digital photography, which received so many requests, we may not be able to fill that. So students are definitely interested in photography. And then of course, I've spoken a little already this year about the DECA students and parents' interest in fusing DECA into our curriculum. The schools who are incredibly successful with the DECA have the opportunity to take more business classes than our students do. And DECA provides very low cost curriculum that is project based and learner centered. And those are two things we are very much on board. So we're adding an introduction to business, a sports marketing and a small business and entrepreneurship. With the hope next year to be back in front of saying now we're offering a finance and investing course as well. This is all driven by student interest. So the students have already had a chance to look at the new program of studies and to enter what they think they would like. And almost all of these short courses were popular with certain pockets of students. So the faculty were successful. Um, one full year new course has been added to the program of studies and it is a wonderful course that I recommend to a not your typical AP student. It's called AP, but it's an entry level course, AP computer science principles. If I, a non-math person, were going to take a computer science course, this is the one for me. It is a no math required, learn how to code class. And the students work in groups to create projects and then the projects are submitted to the college board. And they take a very short exam, not a three hour essay exam. So all they have to do is submit their projects and then answer some questions. And obviously the computer science programming classes are Mr. Synopoli's baiting. And now that we're adding AP computer science principles, he will have what he needs. And we will be submitting our application to become an official computer science pathway course school. Also, if you click through to the new program of studies, I just cannot thank the school counselors and Rita Murphy enough. They are four of the most detailed oriented people in Lucky School. And they went through everything with a fine tooth comb, re-paginated. They, um, there were many different fonts throughout the book. They fixed everything. It's all in one font. It looks beautiful. The table of contents is accurate. And now we can copy and paste for the next ten years until a new team has to re-paginate. So if anyone has questions about the program of studies, I'm very proud to represent it to you, but it's the work of many, many people.
I will, um, thank you very much for that overview. A lot of exciting things happening. And I wanted to go, I'll go around and pass along some Mary.
Yeah, um, I'm so excited about all of these new classes and that. And one of the things that we have heard for the last few years, Chuck will agree is that it's, it seemed like for a while we were providing high school with less and less. We had to take things away and provide, you know, some of the essentials. So the fact that you're taking advantage of semester classes to bring those back and it's just right up my eyes. You have the staff with the, I, it's just, it's amazing that uh, that this is all being done.
We do for two reasons. These courses were all coordinated so that they could take the place of a full year elective. So the students will get only of some of these courses that used to be full year. And then in the opposite programming, other students or the same will get something completely different. And the other factor, so the one factor is the semesterized courses and the other factor. Is going to change, I hope, fingers crossed over time. We are graduating a big class. And bringing in a small class and we just happen to have four classes that are on the small side. And we have a few fewer sets of our core classes in key places. That will allow us to do this. But if we wish to sustain our programs and pathways. I do foresee that I will be before you in the years to come. Explaining why to make shifts towards these pathways and we have to stop. For instance, I do see the global studies pathway requiring additional world language staffing. I think I mentioned that in something I submitted fall, that I see that as a long term forecast. We're very tight in science. And. You know, math and business are currently a safe department. We may want to think eventually of having a business department. And even seeking perhaps the pathway book for him.
And when I went to the program of studies, it's amazing for physics. They have faculty physics and then I kind of skips. Then it goes to the other. Yeah.
Seniors, seniors can choose an AP physics course. AP physics one, which is voucher based, high school physics.
Same that was eleven plus. So everybody gets um, physics in the ninth grade.
Yes.
Right. And it's only if they really want to, then they, in the eleven, twelve grade, they go to AP.
Our students who are super interested in science can choose AP biology, AP chemistry or physics. And if they're incredibly ambitious, they can take AP bio as juniors. But that's, that's just a few separate.
I guess I was just nice surprise. Physics was great, nice way to skip a grade and then go into AP.
Well, it's high school. It does. It's like, uh, it's a set plate rather than a buffet. We require them to take, you know, that they start with that physical science. Then every high school student takes biology all across Massachusetts. Chemistry, most students take, especially if they're college bound. And then for the fourth year, choose which to take more. So they get a taste of the three. Buffet, elbe, the one.
And then the last question is, and this goes to Brian. At one point, cause we. A couple of years ago, we went into grades in CLO, um, increasing the requirements for students. And a lot of it is with the S four. Yeah, but the one thing I thought we were going to. Was the fine arts one year and that is.
That is not current of graduation plan. And I thought you have go in that direction at the time.
We're doing like, but things we spoke at again. And I thought, when I thought we decided to do that, nothing I knew to do is before you, but there was a lot of discussion about where we want to go. This is great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, Mara.
Um, yeah, this is. So you, it, this is mainly geared towards eleven and twelve graders?
Yes.
So how does, how? How does that um, kind of work with uh incoming freshmen and it's all?
I'm happy to answer that question. An incoming college band, four year college bound freshman gets to choose one. So they can take band or they can start communications or they can start art. Or they can start business, but they only get that one slot. In sophomore, there start to be differences and they have a little more. And different sophomores make different choices. Some choose to branch out and. Like some band students will start the communications program. In sophomore year, but that means they're choosing not to take something else. And the counselors work very carefully with them. But moving, so they, so to move backwards, sophomores, all sophomores get one slot. For electives, some sophomores work away to have to. Then junior year, everyone gets at least two. Some start filling those screens. And others branch out and explore different programs and others take fun classes. And that's great too. Senior year, they have a lot of choices and can make a lot of individuals.
So when do incoming um, freshmen pick their classes?
The counselors will, they have already picked their course. Or been recommended into their board classes and at those camps. And they will be visited by the school counselors from MHS in the next few weeks before vacation. And every um, eighth grader will get to meet with counselor for at least a little bit, be talking.
This looks, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Hillary.
Um, I don't have any questions, but I think it's really exciting. I love seeing all of the electives and. Um, I like how it really targets different student interests. It's not like focused in a couple of areas. It's really. There's a wide range of interests for kids. Um, and. I like that, you know, you're presenting here and reaching out to the younger kids and stuff to try to help um, make that more known.
Hey, um, I, I wanted to just, Mary, I think you were asking, and I just wanted to, you asking about a fine arts pathway?
Um, we had, um, two or three years ago, we had done a lot of uh, work on. How we wanted the, the core requirements for a graduate, um, what required that to look like. For instance, we added an extra year math. Is that right, Chuck? Yeah. So one of the comps and then the world language, we also need that requirement. Um, but then there was the fine arts piece, so not a fine arts pathway, but one year, you look at the mass four. Um, for um, the four year colleges, they require one year of fine arts. And I thought we're going in that direction. And it wouldn't be this year, obviously, we've got this all set, but that was my thoughts.
Okay, no, I, I, I kind of remember a little bit. There was discussion about, cause I know Maynard has um. Such a strong art, you know, center and. Uh, I know at one point we were thinking about art space. Was how do we maybe leverage or some of that in, you know, with music or whatever that might be. So I, I do think it's an important conversation piece to. Um, to continue with, because I think it highlights what does make us different or what stands out. Different than maybe other, other schools in the sense that. We might have some of these uh, interests already embedded in our students, um, our student body. Um, from the younger age and just from being in Maynard in our community. So I would. Really love to see how that might plan out or in an opportunity in the future. Um, if there's, you know, I don't know if that's part of that survey that goes out that, you know, I know that there's a survey that goes out every year, right? To students about what are you interested in? And does that, is that some of that, those questions? Put out there for students?
Oh, extensively in this process. This process was driven by student interest.
Yeah, that would be great to hear just more about, um.
I don't think it's. I'm sorry, I don't think there's any faculty member at Maynard High School who would object to the conversation about infusing more arts. Into our curriculum.
Good. Um, I think it's just an important piece to not to lose sight of.
I don't think that's something we could do at current staff. I don't want it so.
No, no, absolutely. No, absolutely. Uh, I don't, I don't, I agree with that, that it's not something we're prepared to do at this point. I just think, I do remember. Just to Mary's point that it had been brought up at some point and probably was pre-COVID. I actually, um, and then, you know, COVID happened. So I just wanted to make sure that we, if it's on the back burner, that we just maybe keep it part of the conversation. Um. And what, what did that look like if we're looking, you know, in a couple of years, how that might be re-envisioned in some capacity? So. Um, question about the world language, two questions really. One about the world language. I know just from um. Special education from perspective, there are, you know, a lot of children or students who aren't able to really take foreign languages. Or just, you know, they are able to waiver out possibly, but there are some opportunities. Um, no, I see no.
Very few, the way we have the requirement written in this time. So what we are doing instead is offering. Um, very much participation, culture, fun based ways. For them to get those credits, but the guidance and world language departments and I. Would all love the opportunity to talk that over with you. Because we would love to see alternative ways for students.
That's what I was gonna to ask. I know some schools have looked at um, ASL, you know, and um, sign language. As, and I think just from an inclusivity perspective, I think that would be uh, fantastic opportunity. I don't know what that entails and I have no dollars associated with it, but I do know that, um, you know, just from. Knowing that there's a lot of language based disabilities, students in our community and with it, you know, learning another language and the. Comprehension and all that entails at the high school level can, you know, can feel overwhelming. If they, you know, not taken that in the fowler in any capacity or at middle school and then they're just, you know, experiencing that. And so what, what does that look like, you know, for those population and those, those students that, um, you know. I would be really interested to hear some of, some of that. Um, and I, I like the cultural piece. That's certainly a great. Aspect, but I, I also think that we have students who are hard of hearing. And in our, in our schools and, you know, wouldn't that be great that we also are promoting, you know, ASL as a language? Um, within our community that maybe that they could help, you know, I see that there is one of the thing about. A teacher, you know, that they could help with, you know, at the follower or the elementary school. There's some kids who have, you know, technology, assistive technology. And I just think it would be a really great opportunity if possible at some point, so. Uh, and the VHS, the virtual learning opportunities, just to clarify, we have. I know there's a lot of AP courses that are available through those means, but not all of them, right? There are many. That are onsite. So is there like, can you, can you clarify how much are? Um, are done or offered AP courses through the, the VHS opportunity versus in onsite?
We offer between ten and fourteen AP courses. Now with the addition of AP computer science principles, we do not offer all of them every year. Because of our small size, but we have teachers who are certified and ready to teach those courses. And through VHS, students can access almost any AP. Which is a very exciting opportunity, but again, that is for a very specialized kind of learner. Those courses are extremely challenging. One of the great. Doing it together with your teacher and staying after with your teacher, having that supportive person. Sort of underneath helping you and knowing where your deficits are. The teachers on VHS are wonderful and our own Sandy LeBlanc is one of them. She is actually a chess teacher. But it just, that relationship in a virtual course is just not the same as we all learned during the pandemic.
It's a different experience for sure. It's, it's definitely a different experience.
Uh, all learners do well with it, but for some learners, it's just a godsend to be able to take that. You know, the AP music class that so many musicians want to take, that advanced theme, for instance. We do have students take ASL, not AP ASL.
Well, good. Um, my last question is about the. Uh, dual enrollment option there. I know I was reading how that's included and I know we've had. Students who have graduated with that. So I do appreciate highlighting, have we seen more appetite around that in the past couple of years? Row or what is the, you know, maybe in this, in this graduating class, do we have? I know one year we had students who, who had a. Associate's degree graduate while, when she graduated the same year as high school. I didn't know if that is something that we're seeing. More of or more appetite for.
We don't have that this year, although I do think we have four students who are actively pursuing many dual enrollment courses. But yes, that does happen from time to time that a student will really get a taste for it and pursue. Those opportunities to the level where they can graduate from high school with an associate's degree. Moving forward, um, my team wants to talk more with district team about early college high school. Which is a way that students can access community and state college classes for on this. And that guarantees that all students, regardless of language level or disability. Are given the chance to experience college classroom before high school graduation. We would have to sign off on that.
That's awesome. I don't know what that, that sign off requires, but I'd certainly welcome hearing more about that in the future, so.
I'd love to learn more about it myself if the team is interested.
I know that there was some um, legislation at the state level that was signed not that long ago, really kind of to that point and acting about. Access to um, college for, you know, all learners and I, I appreciate that conversation as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, so. Um, I think we will go ahead and now move on to FY twenty four budget planning. Yes, okay. Brian, do you wanna start with, I know you had some information in your.
It's earlier. Pretty outdated since I submitted it on Friday and things changed on Monday. I don't think there's any. We knew.
Yeah, I think the only thing that we talked about, so just to today was. We, uh, the select board, I'll, I'll guess I'll update, but I sent an email to everyone. The select board um, met. They, on Monday, they entertained the information that was originally. Presented from Greg to Brian, proposed from Greg to Brian, Brian passed it on to us, the school committee. We agreed that that was an option to consider and in the proposal was to return the circuit breaker, the two hundred and fifty seven thousand. To the school department um, through either the special uh, education stabilization account or. Uh, the fifty thousand dollars to that account and the difference would go to our operating budget. And I know, um, we had talked about these scenarios in our, in our budget workshops and, um. And we've gotten communications from Brian uh, throughout. Through these conversations or through what we believe were conversations happening. It does not seem that maybe the conversations were occurring as we would have hoped uh, up to the select board level. So, uh, they were not in favor of that proposal when they spoke on Monday. They. Instead, um. Voted as I shared with everybody. Well, they didn't vote. They recommended that. Um, and it was uh, an option that Greg recommend, uh, proposed. It wasn't his recommendation as, uh, as. The chair of the select board um, outlined to me. So. In that frame, what that means is we are still, we're not recouping the two hundred and fifty seven. We're not able to. Recoup the two hundred and fifty seven thousand. We will have uh, monies that will be going to the. Special is a, uh, special uh, education stabilization and there's a question about how much we're gonna be going to the operation. The way the wording on one of Greg's communication, I think Brian was gonna get clarification on, because it looks like it could be. Um, what was it eighty? There was reference to a thirty seven. I don't know. Either way, there was some, some language. Let me pull up the exact wording. There, so. At one point, Greg referenced there was fifty thousand that would be going to the special education stabilization. And eighty seven thousand five hundred ninety nine dollars that would be going to the school department operating budget. And eighty seven thousand five hundred ninety nine dollars that would be going to the school department operating budget. And um, in an email, he said additionally, the select board directed thirty five thousand to be allocated. From the general fund to increase allocation, but I believe that thirty five thousand is actually. Part of that eighty seven thousand, so this is where we were getting clarification as well um on that. Ultimately, it sounds like it would be a three percent increase, a three percent total allocation to the school for FY twenty four. Um, which is still not level serviced, so I also did share with the select board, which we have talked about as a committee. In our workshop that we were hoping that these budget conversations would. Um, kind of be more successful and that the warrant article was not something the school committee. Uh, wanted to do on the offset, but we had a deadline to, to meet and so we intended to, at some point. If budget conversations were more productive, that we would withdraw the article. Um, it does not look like that that is where we are right now, so I think it's important for us to just, as a committee, assess, are we? Comfortable still proceeding with the article as, as we have. Um, I think that just wanna make sure everyone, you know, has this opportunity to talk. We talked in our budget meeting, but I think, you know, hearing everyone's thoughts and having a conversation. Uh, about that, so Mary, do you, I don't know if you have, I know you shared that you felt it was important, but I wanted to.
Yeah, no, and it's unfortunate that, that we're in this place and it's not someplace that I really want to be, but I don't think we got any choice. Yeah, it's to do that, stake it full, seven, that would have been a good compromise. Yeah, this is where we need to be.
Okay, and so you, you would be in favor of continuing with pursuing the article um with the current. Um, I guess proposed recommendation that's been presented.
Unless something, unless something involved with money.
Okay, sorry.
As a placeholder, definitely.
Okay, um, Mara, what are your thoughts?
I, I also agree with Mary. I don't, I don't know if some of the clarifications that they do. Brian like get from Greg um concerning um some of the questions that we were brought up. Um, will change um obviously personally, but um, you know, I agree that. No, definitely need to have more than that. So.
Okay.
I'm in favor of, of going ahead and keeping the. You know, assume that, you know, down and then things change that we can just withdraw. So at least we, we have it in there if we need it.
Okay, and I, I wanna make sure we're, we're comfortable, I think, because the, one of the questions that was, was asked of me on, on, on Monday was. Well, if the school department is, is fine compromising, why not just put that in the warrant article? And, and my response was, because we talked about this, is that we believe very strongly that we should have a level serviced budget. That is what we should, we do not feel that we should have to lay off any, any of our staff. Or, you know, sacrifice programmatically. Um, and if, if that needs to happen, that we feel it should be a town decision to do and not. You know, a town administrator's decision to do, let the town decide, like this is, do they feel it's a priority and, and they would vote on it? However, in the same breath, I think what we talked about and what Greg and Brian had, you know, discussed was that. Um, the compromise or the proposal of the two fifty seven would still require cuts. In some way, but it wasn't going to rise to the level of programmatic cuts. And it was what it would require, it was would require us to leverage more of, you know, school choice more than we would like to. So we would be on, you know, not outside of a little bit our comfort zone, because then you're less prepared if there's the unexpected. Um, you know, happens, so it's not without its own risk um in, in doing that, but it felt. Reasonable considering all the needs of the town that, that are happening. Um, I don't think I've misstated anything that we talked about in prior meetings, but that's the um. Response that I, I gave, because that was my understanding from everyone, is that everyone's feel as well?
Yes.
Yep.
Well, what sort of opportunity do we have at town meeting to modify it? Because I feel like, say, people in the community say, we agree with you that the school shouldn't bear. The burden of the full deficit that the town's facing, but neither should the school be spared while other departments. Are forced to make cuts and is there, my understanding is at town meeting, people can modify things, so. Is that something that would be an option at that point with this article or are we um stuck?
So the article. The article can be amended in, in a dollar amount if someone were to do that. Um, the article um basically says that we agree. Now, it would, if the town votes for the town's budget and then votes for ours, you know, it would be an unbalanced budget. And some of that could be worked out, like still allow time to maybe over the summer or whatever to figure out some of that. Like maybe, you know, one, one thought might be, maybe people don't want the town to use a two hundred. Maybe that would be all the free cash would be able to come back to the school department, that, that two hundred and fifty seven, the circuit breaker. Um, that was another part that I had to clarify, because it was repeatedly stated that because of a school department error. Um, it was framed that way and I, I, I found, I had issue with that, because we've repeatedly stated and provided information. That the circuit breaker was, or put aside that way, intended to be used for. Um, expenses that were um intended to exceed a certain amount during the year. There was advisement from the state that inflation or, you know, tuitions were gonna be and they just didn't come to fruition as we expected. The money wasn't lost, it went back to the town, nothing precluded the town from ever just returning the money to us. That is exactly the scenario that played out in Lexington is what's happened in other towns. I brought that up, this is not unique to Maynard. It is a situation where you have over COVID, you know, sometimes it's like throwing jello against the wall. Things, you're just trying to estimate things and, you know, in a matter of six months, the reality is different. So um, so anyway, I just wanted to make sure that's clarified that the school department did not. Do any error in why the circuit breaker, this is because of the dynamics of COVID. And trying to plan and put money aside and things don't always come to fruition, there was no money lost and went to the town. And the town can easily just reallocate it to the school for use, so um. Anyway, I think that to your point, we, um, a lot of things could happen, right? It could be, we could talk about how we wanna maybe include some of that in the sponsor comments, you know, that. Um, you know, we, we had, you know, proposed this option, right? Um, we could talk a little bit about what that is. Um, I think when we, in the budget subcommittee meeting, we talked about outlining, you know, what those. Years, each year, the school department's allocation has been reduced like from four to three to two and a half, you know. But over that time, the free cash has gone up. Um, however, expenses have gone up, I mean, look at.
Yeah, no, I get all that. I just meant like, I don't know, I wanna make sure, like, I want us to win the vote. And so I worry a little bit about um comments that I hear about saying. You know, you guys shouldn't bear all the burdens of the cuts, but neither should you be spared them when every other department would have to make cuts. And so there, there should be some middle ground and we've tried that, obviously.
That is a scenario that Greg, that we were trying to get worked out, we would, we would still have cut if the two fifty seven. So I think that's maybe where the sponsor comments would be helpful, if there was, if that money got returned to the school department. Um, we would still not be a hundred percent level service, there would still be some cut, but. It would also um allow it not to be to the, so maybe that was what, is that what you're thinking, maybe something along that line, we could propose.
I'm more saying, I don't wanna pitch, I don't wanna get us stuck in a situation where we can't compromise anymore. Um, because I don't want us to lose because we're not, like, I don't wanna just say, we tried to compromise and they didn't compromise with us, so we should get everything we want now. Um, I wanna make sure that there's some room, um, even as we get closer to town meeting. Because um, I just worry when it's an all or nothing, that makes the vote harder for folks.
Door, the door is open, I don't think, uh, you have to outline a dollar, so that's what the article requires. Um, you know, I think if, if, if someone wanted to amend that, I would wanna understand, you know, what is that based on? You know, where's, you know, where is that amendment coming from? Um. You know, I don't know, maybe we could, you know, talk a little bit more about or just understand a little bit more of that. Um, because I think it was a compromise for what we were trying, but there, you know. I don't know, I don't have an answer to that myself, but I, you know, I, I don't wanna certainly feel like we're alienating anybody, that it's just, it, it's never been. Unwillingness to try to do better, you know, to get, you know.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I think we've been trying really hard to compromise, I just wanna make sure we keep the option of being able to compromise moving forward. But I support going forward with the article the way it is written right now, um, like I agree with this, I just, um. That was one question I had, and then my other question, and this is because I didn't, I was skipping through the select board meeting. Um, on Monday and I didn't go back to catch things that I was missing, but it was sort of sounding like there were comments about. Saying that we've sort of like gone about this the wrong way and at the last minute are trying to put forth something different than. Um, and like this, these budget discussions should have happened, like, starting in the fall. Was that said, because that sort of surprised me, because we have been saying all along we needed a certain.
Yeah, I mean, there's been, there's never been a moment that I recall that we would ever say. Two point five is ever gonna suffice for level service. However, I think there are certain delusions out there that because um, there was a comment made in. And our, the leadership, I had a leadership meeting this week that, well, if the, if the school department wanted to explore an override, they should have brought it up in the fall. Now, had we ever brought that idea up in the fall, we would have been knocked out at, you know, the need. Like, why aren't you just waiting, you don't know what's gonna happen, let's let the budget process, you know, play out. So it's kind of like, you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't. I, a thousand percent, and I think each one of us is, wants to be supportive of the process, you know, as information comes out. But however, when you're left with no other options at this point, we're well within our authority to pursue what we think is supportive of our, our town. But yes, to your point, absolutely, there were people who said that they didn't agree with our approach. Honestly, I don't really care if they agree with our approach, we.
But I feel like we've been really consistent since last spring, saying if we don't get what we want, here's the consequences, why are we? Maybe we need to advocate harder by doing this, like, I feel like we've been, it's been a gradual and consistent message over the last year and a half. So I was sort of surprised to hear this, like.
That's where. Well, I mean, I think that's where just the delusion kicks in, because we have, we getting, you know, it's, I think people, when you don't, when you don't conform to what people prefer. In the process, that's where people, you know, get upset. Um, totally understand, I think, to be honest, taking steps back. I think everyone i- is feeling the impact to each resident, right? Because we are gonna be asking a lot of our residents between now, the fall, maybe next spring, right? That is really where all of the concern is rooted in, is that we have um. We have bleachers, we have a school, we have, we have roads and sidewalk, we have seniors, like, these are all very heavy and costly. Aspects, and I think this is what brings us to the point. And that we need to really seriously talk about a town override. You know, because in, aside from the school, that's separate, right, Green Meadow School, Fall, that's separate. There's other, all these other needs in the town that the expenses are not gonna go away. You know, the expenses are gonna increase, we're gonna be doing this every, every year, we're gonna be having the same conversation, because two point five percent is not. Sustainable, so, you know, is it pal, you know, is it something that the community would be willing to entertain? If we had like an override that encompass senior, things for the seniors, roads and sidewalks, school, um. All these other like group thing, we haven't had an override in twenty years. Would that be something maybe people might be more willing to do and then it, like, we wouldn't have to maybe revisit it for another few years, you know, um. I think FY twenty five is when, we need to have, let the community talk about that, we're, we're denying our community residents. The opportunity to weigh in on priorities for our town, do, do they feel that we should be cutting, let them decide that. You know, do they feel like certain services maybe are no longer, we don't wanna pay for this much, let the town decide that, you know? So, anyway, that's, yeah, we've never been unclear about our need to have more than two percent, Hillary. If it is. Yeah, no, it's, I think it's a matter of people not willing to listen or people thinking that we should just find money, you know. Oh, I think this is what we always hear, like, use your grant money or, you know, use other money. Um, I mean, one of the things that got brought up on Monday was, um, well, you know, you're getting a new school. And I was like, so, yeah, we are getting a new school and we also got a new fire station. Do we cut the fire department's budget, you know, because we got a new fire station, I just doesn't like, it's just two different things, you need to be able to be strategic.
Yeah, that's where I keep going back to, if I buy my kid shoes, I still need to feed her dinner.
Yeah, they're just unreal, I mean, there's just.
They're two different things.
Yeah, so, I just to kind of wrap it up, it sounds like everyone is on board with continuing. Um, we will, um, we do need to do some sponsor comments. And we will uh need to do that before the warrant is approved, so uh we talked, Mary and I talked maybe working on this in the, and, you know. Putting some thoughts to paper um to bring it back to the school committee meeting the next time. Um, we'll also need to include in the sponsor comments an appendix that will have a presentation for the FY twenty four budget. Because that will be part of what we want. Um, folks, so whatever we use for our public hearing, I imagine was what we're gonna end up including for the town, so. Sound good, everybody?
Yeah.
Alright, great. Um. Chair report, I'm just gonna just, Saturday was a great, great, great event. Um, Mary, thank you, I know you were like, you had a woman with many hats that you were wearing. Um, but it was really great community event and I really hope that we have the opportunity to continue to do that for every year. I was amazed how many people turned out, I mean, they were there before I got there and they stayed well past it was over, so it was super successful. Um, I do appreciate the deliberation of the select board. Um, and the consideration, I actually will have to say, they talked more about budget at this meeting than I have heard in many other years. So I appreciate the conversation and I do hope to, that there is continued robust conversation. I was um disheartened to, to see Justine St. John had stepped down from the. Um, building committee and I know that she is someone who is very passionate about the work that she does. And she does regardless of whether, believe how someone believes, I know she's dedicated a lot of her personal time. To the work that she does as a select word member and um, and her beliefs and what she's um, doing for the building committee. So that was, it was, uh, I think it was a very sad moment, um, as that played out in a public meeting. Um, but I do appreciate the work and I just wanted to make sure I took a moment to recognize her for that. As well, um, public service is not easy, so um. Anyway, I, for a moment, I thought she was stepping down from the board in the moment, I, and she had to actually reclarify, she said, I resign. And then it was like, she's like, no, just from the building committee, because I was like, oh, man. Um, anyway, and I think that's really all that I have. Um. Moving on to other reports, Elizabeth's not here, Mauro, anything from you? Wanna just report out personnel? I can do that later on.
Um. Let's see, um, I had a meeting on Monday with the art space executive director. And um, we talked a bit about, you know, how we can collaborate between schools and. Um, art space. Um.
Oh, good, because I was just actually brought it up in the budget, I, we saw her Saturday and told her like, hey. Maybe there's an opportunity over the summer to reach out to, you know, Brian or something, I don't know if there's a program that artists can, can put on in the, you know, like a. Workshop or something in the school that.
Yeah, so part, part, I think she said that they could possibly do something. Um, this summer, um, but it really, I think it really depends on how, where they're at. Um, so.
A lot of moving.
Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts, um. Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts. Um, she did, that's, she did mention the film um, class. Um, and that's kind of how that came all about where they, they then, um, got touch with me. Um, and whether or not it was to, to, you know, come and talk about it a little bit for public comment. Um, and, um, so I think what I'm, what the plan is for that is for her to then get in touch with um, either Brian or maybe Chuck and like work through, like work out that way. Um, and, um, so I think that's kind of where we're, where we're working towards.
Okay.
I think I mentioned that my, the last, um, school committee meeting that I went to charting the course. Um, and it wasn't, um, yeah, actually, it was good to just a refresher. Um, and I was told probably at lunchtime when I mentioned to, um, one of the people at Mass that, you know, I had already taken the course. He was like, oh, you don't need to be here. You can leave right now. But, um, it was good just for refresher. Um, there were some things that I thought, um, might be, um, relevant. Um, so I'll, you know, go through my notes again and just, um, type up an email to everybody just for informational purposes. Um, on that, um, we have a policy subcommittee thing, um, on Tuesday. Um, so, and we'll, we'll be working on other. I'm assuming we're not gonna have, we won't have new ones for Wednesday.
Wednesday, right.
For our, um,
Yeah, Wednesday, we'll just take the ones that we, we were gonna be like the first read, second reads, um, Colleen. Right? The ones that we were, we punted the past two agendas and then we'll Yeah. Put in there. Okay, great.
Um, trying to think if there's anything else. I think that's, um, oh, I did have a question. I was just going through some, um, some emails. Is there a joint meeting on April first for joint tri board?
My gosh, uh, so no, as soon as I said, press send, that got um, changed. So there's no April first meeting. There was, there's supposed to be a budget meeting, a joint, cuz this was brought up, like we supposed to continue a tri board budget meeting. It doesn't look like it will happen until after town meeting. There's, uh, I think there's an unwillingness to, to do that before. So just wanted to, but conversation of override will be part of that meeting. So.
Okay.
All right, so it's sort of backwards to do an after town meeting.
Well, because I think no one wants to address the school committee's, um, article. And they, uh, this left board indicated in their meeting, they do not wanna entertain an override for FY twenty four, which I don't think we were necessarily wanting to do. I think that we left it open, but, um, so this might be a roundabout way to try to silence that conversation.
I think it would be a good, um, look for the town if, um, community showed they could work together and try to compromise and I suppose to say, we're not gonna talk about it until it's too late.
Yeah, I, I know, I know. It's, I think there's always a desire to, I don't know, for our end to have conversations. Um, but apparently when you question or you advocate for your schools, you're, you're demonized. So. Um, all right. Hillary, any, oh, Mara, did you have, are you all done?
I'm all done, thank you.
Okay. Hillary?
Um, I'm all set. Mara talked about, um, policy and we haven't had a meeting for DEI. Um, hopefully we will have one soon. Um, there's been some scheduling difficulties.
Right, um, I know that just to pick up, um, for personnel. Uh, we talked about the, we have a couple of different contracts. I have yet to punt them over to everybody because it's just been that kind of week. But, uh, Brian has been working with, uh, legal and the town on some agreements regarding space, so, uh, like DJs and all these other things. So, um, I'm going to forward them over to the school department or the school committee just to get some visibility and what is, um, being reviewed and kind of having some of the discussions. At some point, they will be brought to the school committee, um, to vote upon. So, uh, again, these are just MO, MOAs about, um, space, one of them. Um, the town, the MOA with the town regarding maintenance that is up for renewal. So that's one of those agreements that's still being worked on. Um, so a couple of things on the horizon there. And, um, what else? Oh, I can't remember now. Um, budget, we talked about, oh, um, I'll just say special education. We had basic rights. Uh, which was actually pretty well attended for IEPs, uh, recently. I just to kudos to Mr. Ferranti and, um, for Karen Heath for, um, coordinating that and getting that out to the, the community and all the principals were able to share that out. And that is, they're also going to be an executive function, um, presentation. Again, I think it's May sixteenth, uh, successful last year. So that will be, um, hearing more, more about as well. And, um, that's with Sarah Ward, sorry, Sarah Ward. And I think that's, oh, um, and just for everyone's awareness, um, the open meeting law extension, I think, the Colin, did you say that in, in our meeting here? It gotta, it's, uh, I know you said in our budget, but just to, for everyone's awareness, it's, um, it just is waiting governor's signature. So it looks like it will be extended until twenty twenty five for what we've been doing, um, which is great. And also just awareness for everyone, the open meeting law, um, recent judicial ruling. Uh, what that basically entails, uh, just how it was, um, and we can go back to policy, maybe, um, Co- um, Colleen and, and Mara and Hillary for policy. This would be, look at our policy, see if there's any, anything that needs to be amended for the, uh, public comments again. Because, um, in light of the recent ruling, basically, they want, if people wanna insult us, they can, which they do. I don't think anyone has ever, um, refrained from insulting us. But the, the law supports that it is considered free speech. Yeah, but that was pretty much what, what, what it was. It was very narrow and we just wanna make sure that all the definitions of which we read about. We need to read those at every meeting, um, the three minutes, the three hundred fifty words that has to be reinforced at every meeting. And followed pretty, pretty specifically. So anyway, th- those are my updates. Um, I think we will now.
Oh, did you want to, um, read the
Oh, the outreach. Oh, the student report. Yeah, actually, before I do that, the outreach, um, Mary, I know that we, we're, you wanna give the out, update on that?
Well, um, well, first of all, I was able to go to the school council meeting early this week for the high school, which was really great. Um, but then Natasha and I are going a date in April. It's gonna be in that insert that goes into the actual limited to meet, um, with the seniors. Um, it's Friday, eleven o'clock, coffee at the senior center, talk about education and also informal conversation about the green metal school.
I think it's the twenty first, right? April twenty first.
Yeah, but anyway, so that was
Okay. And I did actually, um, speak to, um, I spoke to Armand yesterday. I met with him and I know he's on that senior focus group as well. That, and so he suggested that, um, reaching out to Ellen Duggan and, uh, Deb directly to, they have something on Mondays they meet on. So Mary, I'm gonna partner, pull you in and CC you on that communication. But you know, that might be an opportunity because I know the senior center is something that they, is important to them. And if there's a way that we can, um, you know, maybe find some coming round, um, to see how we can, you know, present something unified, um, that, you know, helps more receptive to voters and, and however that might look like. I think, why not? So, um, let's, let's, I think, let's, let's take those, um, make those conversations happen. So, okay, uh, and that's the student representative report. Let me out. So highlights, March Madness, not great participation through the week, snow days and delay really hurt participation. However, ended strongly with fun pep, uh, prep rally that was positively received throughout the grades. Deca states, Deca states had several mannered students competing with one student of note. Aiden Donahue placing very highly. Aiden will go to Florida in the end of April to compete in the national competition. Basketball playoff games, the Maynard High School boys lost in the round of the round four to the, um, champs. We were proud of our Tigers and grateful to the seniors who gave all, gave their all throughout the season. The musical, the show focused on relationships and problems that can rise as a result of them. Lots of positive reviews from community members and a great first musical from the new director. Concerns and discussions and solutions. Outside food and drink update after conversations with Winston. Uh, seniors may bring outside foods and drinks into the cafeteria as long as they are consumed in the cafeteria. This enhances senior privilege. No restaurant deliveries are allowed during the school day due to possible disruption and possible safety concerns. Lunch at, update, certain lunch, um, certain lunches were chosen more than others will communicate to Winston's. Uh, the lights, several students have raised concerns that the lights outside the high school were on twenty four seven, even when the sun was up, uh, which wastes electricity. Students generally very interested and concerned about sustainability and environment. And Brian, on that point, this is, there was some action recently about that, correct?
Yeah, that's been corrected by an electrician.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to, I remember it was brought up in a meeting, but, um, so that, that's, I'm glad that was a concern and has been addressed. Oh, facilities director worked electrician who was parking lot. Oh, that was the next sentence. He was able to fix the issue and now electricity will be saved. Um, sorry, there we go. Uh, UML survey, uh, anonymity survey given to students asked for identifying information which may have made students uncomfortable because they thought the administration may be able to link their responses on sensitive topics to them directly. Next time, more information will be shared on confidentiality procedures to alleviate student concerns about the perceived risks with sharing information. And upcoming, one more week until the end of term three, Disney trip prep is in its final stages. Start of spring sports, track, baseball, softball, all the first practices this week. Tenth grade MCAS is next Tuesday and Wednesday. So thank you to Liam and all for that wonderful report. And um, approval of consent agenda, uh, minutes.
There are only um, suggestions on all three sets of minutes. I did just check that.
Yeah. So we have the um, the other joint or the try, the joint meeting from March eighth for the Green Meadow Building Committee, Softboard, School Committee and FinCom. The minutes from two twen- two, two, twenty three for the school committee and the minutes from January nineteen twenty three. So, any questions or without objection, um, I will accept those minutes with edits. Unless there's any discussion. Nope. Okay. Minutes are approved and accepted with edits. Um, warrants. I know you sent an email about this, Colleen.
Forty nine fifty, twenty three forty nine and twenty three fifty.
Got it. Um, so twenty three forty nine and twenty three, um, twenty three forty nine and twenty three fifty. So I will, that objection move that we accept the approved warrants twenty three, twenty forty nine and twenty three fifty. All right. Warrants accepted. And with that, I will move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Roll call. Mary Bradley. Mara Hogan.
Yeah.
Hillary Griffiths.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera. Yes. Thank you all for your participation and, um, have a good night.